This meeting of the board is now called to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. Trustee Novaria sends her regrets. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented?
I have nothing for you.
Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda on page two, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I make the motion.
Thank you, Keith. Is there a second? If you are all in favor, please say aye. Motion passes and we'll move forward with our agenda and we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have one scheduled report today and also just want to point out that your places, you should have a memo there from Dan Van Mastick who has some other obligations this evening, just a little update about what he's been doing with the Internet issues and replacement of the access points at Central, Middle, and North Middle Schools. So, very positive news from him about how that solution is working, but he wants to let it go just a little bit longer before he commits to that more district-wide. So, that is there for your review. And our first and only update on this, on the report is on our bond project update. So, John Edwards is here and joined by Paula Johnson to give you that update.
Thank you Superintendent B. Lang as well as members of the Board of Education. I ask Paula Johnson, our Director of Finance, to join me for this particular bond update. We're going to talk a little bit about budget. At the last board meeting, we brought to you some preliminary cost of both Central Elementary and Haverhill. And we asked Tom Stanek to be a part of that presentation. So, this is a follow-up related to those costs of what we're projecting for the first two schools. I just want to remind the board of our eight guiding principles. We've used these as a baseline or benchmark for all of our decisions. I was jokingly sharing with some people on our team, when you think about a building that 70-plus thousand square foot of space, you're making literally 70,000 decisions on everything from the flooring to the ceiling to the walls and all the way through each of those learning environments. But today, I just want to dig a little deeper in four of the eight principles, guiding principles two, three, seven, and eight. Item two talks about having high-quality outcomes along with established budget of timeliness. Three talks about staying close to our foundational premise of designing for the future. Seven talks about our long-term solutions that honor prior stakeholder investment. And eight is our work to minimize disruption while maintaining a long-term perspective. So, these four come together because we're looking at timelines and we're also looking at budgets. What we're trying to help make decisions about is making sure that our scope and our sequence of all of our elementary projects align with our guiding principles. Now, these factors are driven by our budget. And Paula will talk a little bit more about that element of it. But as we have our first two buildings underway and we have a little better idea of our cost, our cost today per dollar of what we're able to buy is not the same as it was in 2019 when these budgets were aligned. And so, as we're looking at getting through our elementary sequence and we're keeping these four elements at the forefront, there exists the possibility that we may need to make some modifications to our plan. So, I'm going to ask Paula just to share a little bit about the financials of what happens kind of behind the scenes with the board and some things that occur over the next month. Then I'll come back and talk a little bit about some next steps.
Thank you, Johnny. The bond that was approved back in May, or excuse me, May of 2021, August of 2021, sorry, was for $175 million. And as Johnny mentioned, that was based on 2019 prices when we compiled together the budget of the projects that we wanted to accomplish at that time. Fast forward now to 2023 and we're seeing inflationary costs. We don't have as much buying power as what we did have because of that inflation. And construction costs are coming in on average of approximately 27% higher than what people are planning to spend. And other school districts are seeing this across the board as well in projects. So, we spent a lot of time looking at cash flow and aligning projects to maximize what we want to accomplish and time those sequences appropriately. And when we first came to the board, we're planning to do four series of the bond, but we also have to align cash flow with the series. So, the first series that we did draw down on was received at the beginning of November 2021, and that was for $50 million. And that's the funds that we've been using now currently for the architectural costs and the other costs that we're experiencing to start these projects for the elementary schools. We are planning our second series to still occur in this fiscal year. We will be coming to the board in the next meeting for a $10 million request to issue bonds in April, so that you'll see that resolution next month. And our goal is to receive those proceeds by the close of our fiscal year on June 3, 2023.
So, here's our next steps that we would like to remain on schedule for Central Elementary and Haverhill construction, which will occur in summer of 2023, both schools opening in fall of 2025. We want to pause, at least temporarily, on the Amberly design schedule and reevaluate our entire scope and sequence of the elementary project. We want to take the next month to collaborate with our architects, the CM, our PPS leadership team, and identify those pros and cons of our projected design schedule. And then we want to come back next month and share our findings and recommendations to the board at the upcoming board meeting. And that pause of Amberly is to allow us to evaluate Woodland and Anglin as well as the Morse Bridge reservation. Amberly particularly is a unique scenario because we plan to design Amberly, the new Amberly on-site, whereas for Woodland and Anglin Road, we know we'll have to demo those buildings and relocate them to the existing Haverhill and use Haverhill as a swing school. So, that's kind of why Amberly is in play right now. So, we do know that we announced Amberly as the third school. We want to pause on that. We've only invested one meeting with their leadership team, so we've only put 90 minutes of staff time in this thus far. And we want to pause the engagement schedule right now, look at the entire scope and sequence so that we don't, if we make a decision to change Amberly's design schedule, that we're working with the most current staff and not starting something, stopping, restarting down the road and people are like, ah, that maybe was a waste of time or some staff could move or change around. So, that's our brief presentation and we'll be happy to answer any questions of the board for any clarifying questions you may have.
Can you say again why Amberly is unique?
So, it's unique because we can build the new Amberly on its existing site. So, we have some advantages there. We don't have those same advantages with Woodland and Anglin Road. Based on those site logistics, we would have to relocate those students to our swing space, which we're hoping, we're planning to have at the current Haverhill. And those buildings will be demoed before construction of their new site. Amberly will not have that scenario.
Not a question, but a comment. This is completely expected and it's kind of a relief because I think we started talking about this a little bit last summer when it was apparent there was inflation going on. And I mean, and the district has kind of a really interesting, like a decade-long stretch for this project, making everything fit. And that's a challenge. And I mean, I just, I want to remind everybody that there was a benefit of choosing this route. And the route is, we didn't have an almost one-mil increase in our tax rate. We did it with no increase. And that means that you have to fit the draws in with when old bonds are expiring and you've got about 1,000 moving parts to juggle. So, there's nothing surprising with what you're saying here and it's, I'm glad, I'm glad it's being talked about. We'll look forward to kind of hearing what the options are.
I can build on what you said. I think everybody here is experiencing the increase in expenses in our budgets personally and so on, so this makes perfect sense.
And I mean, and I would also say, I mean, you've been talking about value engineering the buildings. You know, okay, where can we kind of squeeze some costs out, but you've also been really upfront. You don't want to overdo that.
That's correct.
We don't want to end up, and we have these principles here and we want really, you know, high-quality facilities when we're done. So, you don't have an easy job.
Well, it's not, it's still fun and engaging to see what the future entails for our students and our, and our teachers as well. So, it's good work and we have a great team and I'm appreciative of having Paula collaborating with Bond Council and others to make sure we're doing everything the right way as well as our help from Plant Moran, our owner's reps. Our entire team is very collaborative and people bring unique perspectives to the table and we try to hear all voices in the room as we're making these decisions.
That's the right thing to do and we sure look forward to hearing your next report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the, for the reports section.
All right.
And we can move into board education, which really, we're picking up kind of where we left off. You had a report on our multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSS. And this kind of takes a little deeper dive on the, on the behavioral side, the PBIS portion, which I'll let Kelly Jansenias talk about that and kind of guide this presentation. So, Kelly, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evenings Superintendent B. Lang and Board of Trustees. Today, I would like to take the opportunity to speak to you specifically about how PBIS or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, known as PBIS, functions within our Portage Public Schools MTSS framework. So, I'm going to kind of take you through that today. With that though, first, what we really need to do is set that stage with our strategic commitments, which I think this is really important. When Superintendent B. Lang recently presented to you our strategic commitments, we were capturing what we truly believe in as a district. This work here helps to guide us towards providing our students, our staff, our community that we're a great place to learn, to work, and be a part of. And when we talk about PBIS in our schools, we're primarily focusing on that student success pillar, the people and culture, and then our commitment to equity. So, when we're talking about PBIS, it really does start to tie into those pillars and our equity statement. So, kind of taking you on a journey here. So, in order to put us, put us all together, we have to put what we believe into action and we need to develop a plan, which we've been working on. The Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, shortly known as MYKIP, or Continuous Improvement, is a pathway for districts to improve student outcomes by assessing whole-child needs. So, we're looking at the whole child here, where we develop plans and then we coordinate our funds around that. So, this plan that we've been working on district-wide informs the way we work on a daily basis rather than being an annual event where we do it, we set it on a shelf, and we're not really engaging with it to meet requirements. It is an improvement process that's integrated rather than isolated. And in PPS, what we did was we, we did a needs assessment. We collected data throughout the district and we had decided that we were going to focus on Tier One instructional system to meet the needs of all our students. We further broke that down and developed two strategies. We have an academic strategy and then we have our climate and culture strategy. This is where you start to see our strategic commitments tie into those two strategies with the people and culture and our student success. And we know that in order for student achievement to increase, we need to make sure we have strong positive schools and classrooms to make that happen. So, that's where we start doing our work around MTSS. So, in any work we do in our system, it really needs to align into our multi-tiered systems of support and MTSS framework. And this is our way of doing business, which really shifts from a process for some students to a framework for all students to get what they need. So, MTSS is systematic, it's continuous improvement in which data, in which we have data, problem-solving, decision-making, all of that is practiced across all levels of the educational system to support students. And we have four key components that we engage in whenever we're using this process. We have our comprehensive assessments and data collection, so we think of things like standardized assessments, we think about perception data, a process and dialogue for collaboration, so we use our PLCs, our team meeting structures, a continuum of effective instruction, intervention, and professional learning, so we put all that together with that focus on continuous improvement. All of this together allows us to make system-level decisions that support all students. So, you're starting to see where we have our big, we start narrowing in, it goes into that MTSS framework. And that's really where, when we start talking about positive behavior support systems, that's where this starts coming in. So, tonight, I do want to take a deeper dive into PBIS. You may also have heard of it called Schoolwide Positive Behavior Supports. And this has been our system for teaching social, emotional, and behavioral skills for over a decade at this point. So, it's been in our system for a long time. And it's important to know that it is not a specific model or a program. It is really an evidence-based tiered framework supporting students' behavioral, academic, social, emotional, and mental health. And when we implement it with fidelity, it does improve social, emotional competence, academic success, and school climate. It also improves teacher health and well-being, and it creates positive, predictable, equitable, and safe learning environments where everyone can thrive. So, all of those things start to reduce, we get higher performance, but we reduce office referrals, suspensions, things like that, a happier climate in the classroom. So, how does it work? So, within that PBIS framework, it really does call for actively teaching positive behaviors and implementing evidence-based preventative and responsive interventions to support students' academic achievement and their well-being. So, in PBIS, positive behaviors and behavior expectations are taught to students just like we do math and reading and other core subjects. So, key behavioral expectations, for example, like respect for self, respect for others, are selected at each school. And then they create what we would call rubrics, if you will, for those behaviors, what they look like. We outline them for classroom and other non-classroom settings. Time is then dedicated to teaching it, modeling it, practicing it, and students then are acknowledged and rewarded for exhibiting it. Examples here on the slide, you can see our PAC and SAIL. We have from Northern High, we have North Middle and Lake Center. And then in the corner is the prize wheel at Haverhill that they use where students can turn in their hive tickets and spin for a prize there. Even with a strong PBIS system in place, behaviors still occur. And when behaviors occur, data-driven decision-making, progress monitor, tier-based evidence interventions are called upon to support within that framework. And so, we do work through the framework to make sure that we have that, we can help support. And it is important to note that by specifically in centering equity within a PBIS framework, research does show schools can significantly decrease racial disparities that they see in their discipline practices as well in their overall discipline referral rates. We start to see that occur. So, some examples of PBIS in action in our schools are shown above. But really, to make sure our system is working, it's important to know that we do collect data through walkthroughs as well as student and staff surveys. The data we collect from students and staff are around the expectation for the school and if they receive positive reinforcement within the last month or so. This is, this data helps the school determine their next steps in improving their system. And just recently, when collecting data from a first grader, I asked him how many comic cards he had received and he told me 1 million. And so, he was very, very excited, he had so many. He chuckled at me. And then another kindergarten at another school said to me, no, not yet, but they're just referring to a growth mindset, like it's coming, I know, I'm waiting for it. So, that was really great to see them being a part of that school community. Each school does monitor their system throughout the year and they do make adjustments. They reteach lessons where and when needed. They know there are certain times of the year, like right before breaks or right after breaks, are really important to recalibrate. Each summer, leadership teams get together to strengthen their system based on that previous year's data and needs. And this June, we will have a PBIS trainer attend our Continuous Improvement Workshop with our leaders to continue to support the implementation of a strong PBIS community in each of our school. And so, PBIS is a key system in our MTSS framework as well as it is how we work towards achieving those strategy, strategy two, to support our whole PPS community by improving our climate and culture, which of course then supports our PPS strategic commitments. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you think that these systems, I don't know if you guys have taken any data, do you think they work better in elementary school versus high school, middle school? Just because elementary kids are more impressionable, my kids get crew cards, they get super excited about that, but I don't know. Does it work in high school as well?
You have to adjust your system to match your audience. So, they can work well in the upper, in the high school and the middle school. You just need to adjust to what they like, right? So, I would even say North Middle with theirs, they've been adjusting and I saw some really cool stuff that they do have and it's very much up their alley, like Flamin' Hot Cheetos, you know, or things like that, right? Like, they find things that kids, kids can, you know, say, I can get on board with that. But yeah, you really need to know your audience. And that's what I think our schools have really worked hard to know, is their community and what the kids need and what they value and how to get them to come together to, to be a community. So, that's been important in the upper grades for sure, to be leaders, really. It helps them to, to grab on to that, so.
To the board, this was some information that we said we wanted at the retreat to learn more about the district as we're working towards developing our points of pride and things like that. So, this is just some, some background on, on what's going on.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, well, we'll move on to our comments and communications section. Do we have anyone who needs to address the board this evening?
Just one person.
This is Ross Simon. Did I hear that correctly?
Simon. Happens all the time, yes.
Okay.
Close enough, close enough.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Actually, I was just kind of interested listening to that. My wife is actually doing her master's thesis on growth mindset, so that was really fascinating to hear that's being brought up. First of all, I'm really uncomfortable up here, so I don't, I don't like doing public speaking.
You only got three minutes. It'll be fine.
So, we will rush through this. Unfortunately, I'm not here for such positive things. As I'm sure you hear all the time, parents come in, they're unhappy. Unfortunately, I'm one of them. Knowing that I'm uncomfortable being up here, you know that I also would not be here if I hadn't worked my way up through the entire ladder. We have tried and tried and tried, and so now that's what brings me here. I've been told through my entire time here that we want parent inclusion with special needs. My daughter is, my eldest is adopted from foster care. She is, best case, a challenge. She came to us three years ago and she's been quite difficult. That carries over into the school. We, my wife and I have tried over and over and over again to try to get the school aligned with us. It hasn't gone so well. It started out with my wife having a very specific meeting and saying, look, here are all the behaviors you need to look out for. You've got problems with transitions with her. These are the things that you need to look into. She was told, don't worry, we've got this. Should have been my first red flag right there. They didn't have it. They just didn't have it. She ended up assaulting a child. Because of that, she ended up being moved to a new school. We fought it, we fought it, we fought it. We drove, we brought everybody in, counselors, psychiatrists, psychologists, pediatricians to say, this is the wrong thing to do. This is going to harm her, this is going to send her to the hospital, this is going to be a problem. She was moved anyway. She's been in Borges twice, she's been in Pine Rust once, she's been in Harbor Oaks once, ever since that move. It's been a problem. I am tired of being stabbed. I'm tired of doing my skin back together. To be perfectly honest, to be perfectly gross, I'm sorry, but that's the world that I live in. My kitchen knives are locked in a cabinet because I can't have them sitting out. So, this is what brings me to, we're continuing to try to work with the school. We're continuing to try to have this parent interaction with the school. We're continuing to say, these are the things you can do, these are the things you can't do. This is where you have to look out, this is where you have to watch out, and we're not getting through. During her move here, Ms. Nicole Moran, who we have asked to no longer have contact with us, our child, or any of her future involvement, made the statement that my child was smart because she picked another child that wouldn't tell on her, that wouldn't rat on her. You have any idea what that's like as a parent, to hear that coming from the person who is responsible for your child's future? She then told us, this move to this new school will be great for Ally because this will help her understand the magnitude of what she did. Problem with that? Ally's AFSD, she's rad, she's ODD, she's got a slew of diagnoses. She doesn't learn that way. That's not how this child learns. But the person who's responsible for knowing that, the person who is responsible for knowing and understanding my child is telling me that they're going to take punitive action against her. Also, if you are not aware, MDEOSE says you cannot take punitive action against a child who has an IEP and that she is acting along her diagnoses. But that's what happened anyway. Doesn't really make us feel like we're well-listened to. Last week, no, a couple weeks ago, we walk in for another MDR because my child is having problems in school. Not surprising. Because we're, again, having difficulty being listened to. We walk in, it's another one of those blame the parents meetings. We got blamed for it, a lot. We were told all the things that we were doing incorrectly, down to the point where we were being told what to feed our child. So, we're sitting there in that meeting and before it even starts, Ms. Moran walks in the door. I was told by her supervisor that this person would have no future interaction with my child whatsoever, that she would not be responsible for it because I don't have faith that she has my child in her best interest, based on what she said, based on her actions, based on what she said. I don't have faith in her. I want somebody else. I'm not saying that you can't have a representative there, I'm asking for someone else. She was there anyway. Then I was told, we're going to have this meeting with or without you. If you leave, because she's here, you are forfeiting your parents' rights. Guess what? MDEOSE also says you can't do exactly that. But that's what we were told anyway. I didn't find that out until we went and talked to our lawyers. I have lawyers now. Never wanted them, never needed them, had no, I didn't want to be that parent. But now I have to take all of these things through my legal group because I have to know that what I'm being told is right. And that's where I'm at. That is what I've been brought to. And so, we're then going to move on to this. We get into this meeting and we're being told that my child is now a threat. I said, well, why wasn't she a threat before? We told you all of these things could happen. We told you all of the things that we were dealing with at home. We told you every single one of them. We told you how I can't leave, my eldest alone with my youngest ever. My wife and I have to be home with them all the time. I have no one that I can leave my eldest with. I have to be home all the time. I'm telling you all of these behaviors, I'm telling you what's happening to me. And the school says to me, well, we're actually seeing the behaviors now, so now we have to do something about it. So, you're telling me, for two years, I have sat here and I have said over and over and over again that these things are possible and nothing that I have said, not one thing that I have said, has mattered. Nothing I have said has mattered because you don't see it in the school. And that's where I'm left. That's why I'm here. So, I'm asking you, first of all, I, I'm not going to ask what I would like to ask, but I'm going to ask you to take a look at Ms. Moran's history and I'm asking you to remove her from my child and, and keep her separated. I don't believe that she has my child's best interest. I don't believe that she has my child's best interest at heart, I really don't. I am asking you to help parents like me. The only reason that I'm able to be here tonight is because my parents decided to take my youngest, and my wife is staying home, more than likely with Portage police officers in my front yard, dealing with my eldest child, because of the decisions that were made. All of this could have been avoided if we would have been listened to the first time, all of it, could have been avoided. She never would have had the opportunity, she never would have been able to assault this child, she never would have been moved, and now, we would have teachers, counselors, everybody actually listening to what we're saying, and that's all we're asking for, that's all my wife and I are asking for. And I'm here because I have had to move this far up, because I have had to climb this ladder, and that's all I'm asking for. And yes, I realize I'm throwing a lot of information at you, and yes, I realize that most of it is vague, protect my daughter, protect some of the other people that are around. I am more than happy to speak with any one of you about any of the details of this, just maybe not in a public setting, and maybe not when I'm feeling my heart rate at about 1,000. I know, I would hope, you would look into this, but I would also hope that whatever you hear from the school is the school's version of this. When I look through her paperwork, it doesn't mention any of the failures of the school. We're not asking it to, we're asking it to show everything, but if you were to look through her paperwork, you wouldn't see our side of what's going on. So I'm asking you, if you do look into this, please also get a hold of us, hear our side too. And for every one of me, there's probably 100 foster and adoptive parents out there that don't have the time and don't have the resources to be able to make it here in front of you. And I can tell you, several of them have asked me to come up here and do this on their behalf, and I can tell you I've declined because I really hate it up here. There are very few things in the world that I dislike more than being up here right now, for so many reasons, but this is where I'm at, and I really do appreciate you taking the time, but please, help me figure out what we can do to actually get our message across, to get the help we need.
Thank you, Ross, you did real fine at the podium, just fine. Thank you, we hear you. Thank you, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Any comments from Board Trustees this evening? Okay, we can move to the consent agenda, please, on page six, I believe. Page six, page six. Are there any, any exceptions to the minutes from the February 27th, 2023 regular business meeting? Hearing none, those minutes are approved, and we'll move to our next agenda item, and that's Assurance of District Performance Monitoring Report 1.2. Mark.
Sure, let me, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at this, it was provided in the packet. Ends Policy 1.2 is, is really about 21st century learning skills, and as defined there by, by the district, is the, we refer to as the four Cs, which, as you know, some of these are, are very, very difficult to measure, and, and in reports like this, we have not attempted to set in place measures, but speak to what are the activities that our students are involved in that lead to the acquisition of these four Cs. So what you have before you are a number of charts that kind of helps track the number of students who are involved in these activities that, that lead to the acquisition of the skill, of this, of the skills, yes, and there's, you'll find there's no real significant changes in the data, numbers have remained pretty much the same. And just so you know, that these are, are classes that students take by choice, you know, we schedule, especially at the secondary level, by student demand, so it's, we don't have targets set in place for how many students we want in each one of these programs, but our principals use this information as they devise their master schedules and take a look at student request and demand. So there you see the numbers and a wide variety of courses that are offered through the district. On page 17, co-curricular and extracurricular activities, those are, again, a lot of our skills, these skills are learned through those activities, what we provide both on an extra and co-curricular basis, so we continue to offer and make those activities available or provide space when we contract or outside agencies come into our schools to provide those services as well. Many of the clubs, especially at the high school level, come into existence because of student demand, and we try our best to find an advisor or someone to work with our students, and so there's, there's, that's an ever-changing set of activities that our students get involved in. Other indicators that we have in place are some of our survey results from our students. As you know, we've had, during the COVID years there, there were some, the student surveys, the student satisfaction survey, which is now going to be called our Student Experience Survey, provides us with some information about how students feel and their perceptions about certain classes, so I include that information. As with a lot of the other surveys, our participation rates dropped over time from survey fatigue and other reasons, so we're working on strategies this year to improve participation on the three surveys that we take, so you'll notice there that some of our scores are a little bit lower than they were, it's almost like we're recalibrating post-COVID to develop strategies and work on numbers there, so. And I'll also mention that, as you've heard on our building designs, already at our middle school level, those buildings are designed to encourage project-based learning, which leads to the development of a lot of these skills, and our elementary schools as well, as we've gone through the design process, really are, those are designed to allow for additional collaboration and, and teachers working together, students working together. So those are some of the activities that we provide and some of the things we're looking at in the future. So that's, again, no changes in interpretation on this report, other than updating some of the information based on the, this is the 2021, excuse me, 2122 school year is the latest information we have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on this if you have them.
Mark, how far are you to measure? Yeah, five, six years ago, you put the surveys in place to help, to help with that, and so we have 2122 in the last, so we don't have this year's, what time during the school year does, does the surveying happen?
Students will be surveyed after they get back from spring break, so these are, the survey, the new survey information will be, will be obtained before we get back, before we end the school year, and then our principals can work on strategies to improve that.
Oh, and we'll receive the data probably before the school year ends? What I'm getting at is, kind of seen it now, would love to see the, the survey data before we wait another 12 months if it's going to happen next month, so, just planting a seed.
Yeah. No, we, we first will, you know, so each building gets their own individual data, and so I can provide some district-wide data around this, and similar to this, if you want an interim report, I can certainly provide that if the board desires it.
My curiosity is, things were really going along, going really steady, and then the pandemic happened and things just dropped, and so are we starting to get that back, or would this be a tougher, a tougher climb, would be my question as a trustee?
Same question we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Same question we have.
I had a curiosity also, I noticed that a lot of the programs mentioned in the report are the IB, the AP, the higher end, the higher performing students, things that higher performing students would participate in, and I know you're doing it, I was just wondering if you would comment on how you're meeting all students with these four Cs.
Well, if you, this is, okay, so some of the classes are higher-level classes, but many of these classes are not. When you look at our middle school offerings, all of our elementary offerings are, are not, are not based on, on student ability. The music classes certainly aren't, CTE programming is, you know, addresses a wide variety of students, so I would say this is pretty good cross-representation of our students.
Excellent, thank you. I know you're doing it, I just wanted to make sure that was brought forth, thank you.
Well, I mean, I think all of our teachers in all of our classes try to, to, you know, to build these type of skills with our student body and with our students, so these are just a few classes that we've extracted to show that we do have enrollment in these classes. I suppose it dilutes the information if I were to show every student is, is having the same level of, of classes and opportunities, because a lot of it is by choice.
It is.
And, but in those core classes, I know our teachers are doing a great job in developing these skills, it just happens automatically.
And that's what I wanted to hear, thank you. Excellent.
So then, could I build on that, on the line on CTE? So remind us where, so it's a slight sidebar, so we're going to, we're doing some big things in the county, you know, headed in a new direction with CTE and a lot of KRESA and the village that was, you know, County White Village that was passed. Remind us where we are, because, I mean, hopefully in some of these CTE numbers, when all of that gets up and going, maybe those numbers would be going up in terms of participation?
Well, if you remember the, yes, absolutely, I mean, one of the, one of the inhibitors for students taking CTE classes was because of the fact they were located in other high schools, and students don't like to go from one high school to another, so centralizing some of these programs through KRESA's new CTE center, hopefully will eliminate some of those barriers for students so we get greater participation. We're already through KRESA, starting some awareness activities at the middle school, elementary level, and actually, we're hoping to get one of the board education topics to be around CTE and what's happening specifically in boarded schools, that, what services we're getting, but yes, I mean, we're trying to eliminate as many barriers, the transportation hub would, would be one, so many of those things, hopefully will go away, and students will choose those programs that are going to best serve them without having the stigma of going to another school. Primarily, that's primarily, you know, it.
And the, and the new center is coming up at Wing Stadium, is it not?
It is, it's like, if you've gone by there, if you've driven by there, the ground has been broken, there, a lot of the infrastructure is going in. My understanding is, is that center is scheduled to open now in the fall of 2025. There have been some challenges with supply chain issues, and they're facing the same thing we are with construction costs and trying to figure that out and, and do some value engineering there as well, but yeah, we look forward to that, and, and again, are very thankful to the generosity of the community for making that happen, the donors that donated the money for the building and the, and the property that's going on, so it's something we really look forward to.
I look forward to building Middle College also being, improving awareness for parents to know about it, thank you.
Any other questions coming up? Thank you for, thank you for an excellent report. There's a motion, please, on page 12 to approve the monitoring report.
I think we're going to have one forthcoming, Mr. President.
I move for Board Education to present a review report on 1.2 ends as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance requests.
Thank you, Emily, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the monitoring report is approved. Our last item tonight on our agenda is a discussion item, Central High School, Northern High School weight room renovations, on page 20.
Johnny Edwards will present on that?
Yes. So thank you again for the second presentation, I would like to recommend to the Board of Education, approving the purchase of painting, flooring, and equipment for Portage Central High School, as well as Portage Northern High School. This is for their weight room in the amount of $600,000. Now, that includes $21,000, $21,500 for Van Toon Painting for painting purposes, $132,000, $132,019.84 to Speck Athletic for the flooring, and $420,131.20 to Rogers Athletic Company for the equipment. An additional $26,843.96 would be used as a contingency. Funding would come from the Building Site and Sinking Fund in the amount of the $132,000, that's for the flooring, that is a Building Site and Sinking Fund eligible purchase, and the remaining $467,980.16 would come from the 2023 general fund budget. Provided a chart of those breakdowns so that you can see that without as much text. And just a little background, is the recommendation serves as a dual purpose for both curriculum and athletics. This purchase would provide approximately 1,500 students access between Central High and Northern High School usage for class during the school day, as well as for athletics after school. At Central High, 16 sections of courses take place in the weight room during the school year, including courses such as power training, weightlifting, fitness for life, and advanced football. Portage Northern High School, there are 14 sections of power training courses are offered during the school year. The equipment will be accessible to the student athletes on all teams during the regular season and off-season. The equipment purchased will replace the outdated units last purchased in 2011 at both schools. The equipment would include racks, benches, weight plates, dumbbells, pull-down machines, and other small accessories. A portion of the existing equipment will be repurposed for the use in the doghouse at Portage Northern, as well as the statehood at Portage Central. In terms of the bidding process, these items were competitively bid through our formal bidding process, we put out an RFP. In total, we received 10 responses from the various vendors. For your reference, we've included a copy of the bid tab. The Van Toon Painting was not the lowest bidding for, bidder for our painting, but their bid response met our specifications for painting. Rogers Athletic Company was the lowest bidder for our weight room equipment that met our specific specifications. Finally, Speck Athletics was one of two companies that met the flooring specifications, their quotes were identical, so after further reference checking, we learned that Speck Athletic is our preferred vendor because they have worked with us with Roger Athletic Company. This concludes our recommendation, I'll be happy to answer any questions for the board. If the board so desired to move this to action, I'd be appreciative, if not, we would wait until our upcoming April board meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Are the athletic directors supportive of that?
No, I don't know if you see them often at board meetings, but some kind of way they happened to show up tonight, so let's just ask them, this recommendation? 100% and a thumbs up, and absolutely.
It's weird the way they showed up.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I want to just, you know, share that the athletic directors were instrumental in helping to facilitate this process for us, and I want to thank both of them, and they've worked with the teachers who are teaching the classes, as well as the athletic coaches. I do not profess to be a weight room expert, but once they did a lot of the background research and collaborated with our CIA department, we were able to bring in a joint recommendation to the board that would bring our weight rooms into the 21st century, and would allow our student athletes and our students to have access to top-of-the-line equipment like other high schools are starting to, to do in their, their weight room spaces.
Any questions, Greg?
Comment, I like how you added the phrase "and students," not just student athletes, but "and students," because that was one thing I was going to ask and you answered it, thank you, I appreciate it.
Is it the board's pleasure to move this to an action, Anna? Okay, there's a motion to do that, on page 20, please.
President Van Antwerp, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education move the CHS-NHS Weight Room Renovations Discussion Item to the CHS, NHS weight room renovations discussion item to action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of moving the weight room renovations to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The motion to move to action passes, and now we need an action to approve, which is a longer motion.
Mr. President, um, I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of painting, flooring, and equipment for Portage Central High School and Portage Northern High School in the amount of $600,000. That includes $21,005 for Van Tynan Painting, for painting, $132,019.84 to Spec Athletic for flooring, and $420,131.20 to Rogers Athletic Company for equipment. An additional $26,843.96 would be used as a contingency. Funding would come from the Building Site and Syncing Fund in the amount of $132,019.84, and the remaining $467,980.16 will come from the 2022-23 general fund budget.
Good job both, thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor approving the weight room renovations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the weight room renovations are on the way. Thank you. Thank you, Johnny. Uh, we've reached the end of our agenda, we've completed our business. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, it's anticipation, right? Okay, we all have dark one now.